Regarding resolution and work session regarding the vaccines and the mask mandate. Roll call, please, Julie.
Mayor Mahler.
President.
Counselor Gerson. Counselor Trask.
Here.
Counselor Gorley.
Here.
Counselor Coleman.
President.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
We'll show the record to seven counselors here moving on. He's called in earlier. Go ahead, Ray, and I'll just start it off.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before we start.
Go ahead.
I'd like to apologize to the council about my process that I had at the last meeting. So I just, I I apologize for that.
For the record, apologies has been accepted on behalf of the city. So, Ray, would you like, please, go ahead and move on?
Certainly, we you have in front of you the packet we prepared, which is essentially the same RCA, well, it is the same RCA as last time. Again, on August 10th, City Council meeting, Mayor Mahler requested resolution be brought before the council regarding the effects of COVID-19 precautions enacted by Governor Brown. The draft resolution was presented on the August 25th City Council meeting, and a work session was requested to review and edit the draft documents. I won't go through all the history related to COVID and the mandates, but essentially, Governor Brown declared a state of emergency under ORS 401.165 to 401.670, 433.443, and 431A. Dot 015. Also, under a public health emergency, 653616. Think we've all noted, there have been a lot of unintended consequences from, from the actions taken in order to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. As a result, and based on the mayor's instructions, I've prepared a very draft Resolution Number 22 for 2021, and a proclamation. The resolution with the proclamation is what's mandated in our code. I've also included for your review on page seven, Baker City, which is one of the first communities to do this, as well as Brownsville, which begins on page 10. We've also declared, let's see, and Harrisburg, which begins on page 11. So you could look at those as examples. There have actually been several others passed around the state. Several letters have also been written recently by different cities, and several sheriffs from around the state have written letters to the governor. But those were the three that I used for this draft document. And I'll note that when I put this together, I didn't feel it was my place to use any kind of inflammatory language that may reflect upon the council. And so I did my best to avoid that with this. Even though it is marked draft, I was fearful that some people might think that I was actually speaking for you, and I did not want to do this. So with that, we presented this to you at the meeting last week, and you requested a work session, and here we are. So in front of you, what you see on your screen is both the resolution on the upper part of the screen, and then the proclamation at the bottom. The resolution is kind of the housekeeping piece of everything, where it allows us to kind of document what happened. The proclamation is the meat and potatoes of it, I think. Robert shaking his head. So you have those in front of you, and Brandon's got a keyboard and nimble fingers. So he's ready to make whatever changes you feel would be necessary. What I'd like to ask is for the council to, if you could, to make life easier, probably start with the proclamation. And if you have changes to things in the proclamation, if you could start at the first one, and we can kind of work our way down through that, just so it's easy for Brandon to track. And probably wouldn't hurt us to number them just for this exercise, but and with that, Mr. Mayor, staff is ready to to work with you on this.
Well, I'm going to open it up for council for their input and feedback. And like I mentioned to you earlier, Mr. Towery, my, one of my biggest concerns, and this has nothing to do from a political position or standpoint here. My, my concern is I'm looking at our, all the school district employees, I'm looking at our fire district employees from firefighters and paramedics. I'm looking at a lot of things that are about to transpire, that we're going to lose a lot of employees because these employees have chose, for whatever reason, not to get the vaccination. I personally feel it's their right to whether they want the vaccination or not, should not be forced. I think a lot of other states are falling suit to the same thing. And, but I don't know how you go about putting it in this, or if the council even wants to add on to this proclamation in, in our resolution. So it's very concerning when I, I look at the numbers we're about to lose, and all those entities I've talked about. So with that said, I don't know how you'd implement that into this, but that would be my feedback on this. Council, I'll open it up for discussion.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, Counsel Sanchez.
So, Mr. Mayor, what is our goal in doing this? Are we trying to get relief for our community? Right? And maybe that we need to stay focused on the goal of the proclamation. Is it to express ire? Is it to plead for support? Is it, what are we going to benefit for our community the most? I think we need to address that in this. Because if we convolute it too much, whoever reads it isn't going to understand that either. So if we need two separate proclamations, that would be fine. But I think we need to be careful in not diluting it so much with other issues that we lose the point, and we don't reach our goal.
No, I, I agree with that. And like I say, this, as far as I'm concerned, the resolution, the proclamation was fine. But I, I've had people express to me that it was too watered down, that what's concerning is we're going to lose half our fire department. We're going to lose half our school employees. And we're going to lose half our nurses. And, and so the, the feedback, I think, is overwhelming in our community, more so that we make a statement, not from a political standpoint, but make a statement that our governor needs to listen to our rural communities and say, hey, we need to be listened to, not ignored.
So is that the goal of the proclamation? To just be heard? That's a different issue than asking for support for mental health, because we're in that crisis. Because this is expressing a state of emergency. The state of the emergency would be then, we're worried about too many people stepping away from their jobs, and that we need them to work. That's, that's two separate things. Am I wrong? I mean, I just, yeah.
I would say you could address all of them in one proclamation. So at the end of the whereas's, we request some things. And we can move them around, we can make them more clear, certainly. It says the state of Oregon owes a duty to its constituents to battle the mental health, to address the rise in criminal activity, to fully fund an initiative for DP SST to train future police officers. So we could add some whereas's in there. The other, Robert, if you have some thoughts on language.
It's going to affect the employment in our community to a substantial effect.
So if we go to number 16, the one you just referred to, the state of Oregon should look to the future and fully fund an initiative for DP SST to retain, train, our future police officers, firefighters, and school personnel to better, to be better equipped to deal with the mental health issues. I don't know that the end of that's the way I would word it, but I'm thinking that if we add the word retain, firefighters and school personnel might get you where you want to be. To better equip them to deal with mental health issues facing our community.
Again, this is open for council feedback. I'm listening on what other counselors think. I mean, I'm throwing out what was being presented to me by the public.
I agree with Counselor Gorley in terms of the purpose of this. I think that we need to concentrate on the purpose as it's outlined specifically for Sweet Home. And I think that's very important, that we deal with it as, as an issue within our community specifically. And we have data to support it. And I think that's a very logical argument. I don't have a problem with adding what Counselor Gorley recommended in that particular whereas. It seems to me that it would state the issue, you should talk about it. What I, what I am not in favor of is a boilerplate proclamation put forth by other people that are not, that's not consistent with what we have within our community.
No, it needs to focus on our community. I'm not, I'm not saying not.
Offering my opinion.
No, and I respect that.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sanchez has her hand up as well.
Counselor Sanchez, go ahead.
I apologize, but the call got dropped the last time, so I might have missed some of what other counselors and the attorney have been saying speaking close to the microphone. So, but from my standpoint, I just am not interested in imposing any sort of vaccination mandate on the residents of our town. I have been reading data that says the masks work rarely unless it's an N95. I can't really find data for outdoor mask. I don't want to lose any of our emergency services, our volunteer firefighters. People are very afraid on both sides of the issue regarding acquiring the COVID virus, or being forced to have secular views imposed on their conscience or their religious beliefs. And I would just like to try to find some balance, because right now it's very out of balance. And so I want to include some sort of language to where the people who are nervous at their freedoms and their constitutional rights are being trampled on, they can see that we stand with them, as well as people have the right to get the vaccine and wear the mask if they want. We want to kind of support both sides. I'm just really nervous about losing our emergency services. I know that we just signed some sort of emergency coalition with other towns, or joined forces with other towns. And the fact that we're going to lose a lot of volunteers and help and people to help with emergencies, that really frightens me. I'm just really nervous for what this is going to do to our town if we don't give them some sort of empowerment to make decisions for themselves, and say that we aren't going to be imposing any of these vaccination requirements on our city staff, or any of our volunteers.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with all of that stuff. I, my biggest concern, as well as your firefighter, if we lose 20% or 30% of our volunteers, we can't fight fair. We simply can't. It will not work. How would you like to be in Burns, or, or one of those towns over there, where maybe they only have 10 people? What are those folks going to do? I don't think she has a concept of what she's trying to do here, is how much harm is going to be caused. There, there's no way of putting a number on that right now. But if, if I don't know how to do this. I don't know how to do this. I, I don't. I, I don't want to force it on somebody like anybody else. You want to wear a mask, wear a mask. I don't have a problem with that. I don't like them. No, I don't think anybody likes them necessarily. But anyway, I, I agree if, if, if she goes along and makes this on October 18th, we could be in big time trouble. Big time trouble. And I don't think she has a concept of what that's really going to cause. Thanks, Mayor.
Anybody else have feedback?
Can you guys hear me?
Counsel Richards, go ahead.
Yes, I agree with both Dave Woodwell that Counselor Trask and also Counselor Sanchez has said. My main thing is, I just don't want people to think that Sweet Home is going to go out there and enforce like these vaccine passports that they're talking about. I get a lot of people that have emailed me about just that one, and they're concerned with like, like, is the city going to enforce that? And I said, no, obviously, I don't think we will. I don't know why we would. But I, I just think that somewhere in writing, we should get that we will not enforce like the vaccine passports. But I'm also terrified that some of that goes through, that we will not have any first responders, or nurses, or teachers, or school help, or anything like that. It's very scary. So I think anywhere in there that we could get people to just say that we will not, like, whether you want to get the vaccine, that's your choice, that's your own choice, that's all good. But I don't think that we should be the ones to decide. And I think that people should know that. But thank you, guys.
I think we've made that really clear in both of our last two meetings, that we are not the mask police. And that we are, that is a state thing, they're doing it. We're not in control of that. If we need a statement that's more solidified, I don't know. I think putting it out there twice publicly is, if they're not listening, they're not going to listen. And so that has really nothing to do, though, with the request for more funds to help our, our community employees, and the community that are at a greater risk because of the results of COVID. That mental health piece, I think, is something we can capture more for our community based on that. And so, and the mask thing, I, I think actually Sweet Home's doing a great job right now. When I go into businesses, I see people some wearing masks, some not wearing masks. And in our council meeting, it was noted that some can wear masks, some don't have to wear masks, but that's not on us, once they've been told. So it's a, it's a personal choice, and that's, I think that's where it should stay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm still a little confused about the purpose. Are we asking for money, or are we making a proclamation to declare what we believe our community needs? And from what I've heard from people, I think having something in there in writing is, even though we've said it twice, that we're not the mask police, I know that education is repetition, repetition, repetition. And so having in writing that we're not enforcing masks, nor are we going to enforce a vaccine mandate, I think it would be beneficial to the community to see that in writing. And I know it doesn't have anything to do with requests for money, but I'm not sure our resolution should request for money. I think that's done in legislative committees.
I don't think this is anything to request for money at all. This is basically put in writing that we're not going to enforce masks and vaccinations. It's people's choice. Mine's not numbered.
States with increased funding and resources for mental health care throughout the state of Oregon, especially for rural Oregonians. I thought that was for us. There is nothing wrong with saying that the mask issue and the vaccination issue has actually added to the stress level within our community, because I think that's actually causing as much stress as the pandemic itself. And so we just need to find the appropriate place to put that in there.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sanchez has her hand raised.
Counselor Sanchez, go ahead.
I, this isn't regarding to what Counselor Coleman or Counselor Gorley was saying, because I am also confused about requesting money on one hand, and then making a resolution or proclamation about where we stand as a city on mask mandates and forced vaccinations. But I just would, I personally, I would like to take out the whereas, we as a municipality have no legal ability to summarily defy the governor's emergency orders. I just, I don't know why that is necessary. I think we should make a proclamation or a resolution. I, I apologize for not totally knowing what the difference is about where we stand with the forced vaccinations because of our emergency services and the COVID requirements, and how it's affected our community separate, and then maybe ask for more resources in something additionally.
Haven't been vaccinated. You run the liability that if somebody gets COVID from that person, and they experience enormous doctor bills, because we made statements and encouraged them possibly not to, then we are on the hook for litigation. And if we don't listen to legal counsel, and we ignore a governor's mandate, that litigation could be enormous. It could flatten us. And so I just want to be really cautious on making statements that put us at greater risk. Because personally, I'm not going to lose my house because of a proclamation somebody else wants. I'm just not going to do it. And I think that's where every person that has to do this needs to recognize. Okay? That's it. That's all I'm, and like I said, I don't mind putting it in there, but we need to be very careful about the way this is worded.
Ms. Mayor, and I
So, so I'm, I'm sorry.
That, that is a very true state. The, the way that the rules are, the way the rules are right now is that at least what I see, and Ray can go over this, but it says that for the indoor mandate, we're supposed to, the, the city is supposed to ensure that employees, contractors, and volunteers comply with this rule within the inside space, and make reasonable efforts, and, and post signs, and that sort of thing. But penalties down below, at least for this section, could be something else for different sections, but it's $500 per day for a person who doesn't do that. Person being one is the city. So you've got to be careful on what you're going to say in this, and, and be on board with it, if, if, whatever it's going to be, that you really think about it. And, and we, we, we get the point across, I, we get the point across that you, you may not agree with different stuff, but you don't want to come across as in this works, workplace advisory memo that was given me, it says, does not actively contradict or otherwise undercut the rule's requirements. That's the type of line that they've drawn there, that you need to be careful of on what we put in the resolution, or the proclamation, whichever it is. The resolution in this particular case is just to carry the proclamation is all it says. So it's really in, in the proclamation that you're with. But that's the type of language, and those are the type of, you know, at least penalties that we found out that, that could come back and, and be there, and not just as a city, but as personal, possibly personal liability.
Mr. Mayor, I have this attorney a question. So, Mr. Snyder, who enforces the mask mandates, or if there's going to be a vaccine mandate? Who would be the organization that would enforce those?
I'm, I'm assuming it's OSHA.
So we're inputting right
I assume other ones could. State police probably could. I, I don't know. But I just heard on the, before I came on the television, they had some business was, had to sign out there, you don't have to do this, or whatever. And it's different for customers. I mean, they're in a different line item here. And, and so that's different. But they were going to investigate on, somebody was going to investigate on it. They were, you know, so.
So putting in writing that we're, we're not the ones that enforce that, because we're not the ones that enforce that, shouldn't put us at risk because we're not the ones who enforce that. It's just making it clear.
Right. It's, but it's how you write it up.
Yeah. And I'm sure you'll help us write it clearly.
That's why you get the big bucks.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead.
The other thing I think we need to keep in mind, too, is in a situation like Counselor Gorley has brought up, as a policy board, we would need to check in with CIS, because if we do something outside of the law, we don't have coverage. And the ORSs are, are, I know there's a lot of debate out there about constitutionality and whatnot, but the ORSs are very clear. The governor's mandates have the weight of law in an emergency situation. And so if we do anything outside of the governor's mandates, I don't believe our insurance and Robert can
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the, the risks that you take, is that you're, once you say, I, I've done this, please, insurance back me up. And they then look at it and say, you're either in or out, and they may write you a letter that says, you aren't covered by us. You're on your own.
Mr. Mayor, I'm still confused, though, because if we're going to just state that OSHA is the one to enforce, then we're not doing anything that goes against the law, the ORS, or the mandates.
Ms. Mayor, I would respond to that with, currently, if she goes a step further, the Constitution gives her all policing powers within the state, which means she could, if I understand that correctly, according to the Constitution, she could order our police department to enforce them. And that would be out of our our realm of control at that point. I could be wrong on that. It does say that she has all policing power. And I'm sure if that includes
Well, it goes in, and it actually says in there someplace, I did read, local, local police, too. I mean, it adds, it's sentenced right in there, because it includes them. I'm just saying, it's got to be, you've just got to be really, really mindful of, of what we, what we say and how we say it.
Well, it goes in line with Baker City's resolution. Whereas, as we as a municipality, have no legal ability to summarily file out these mandates, guidelines, enforcement by OSHA, and therefore cannot protect any local business from state direction targeting, blah, blah, blah. So, you know. Yeah, I mean, you still stick with that. So you can say no vaccines and no mask mandate, but we have no enforcement.
Really, between nine and 10, we could add whereas that addresses the stress on, upon a community due to the the feelings around mask man, the ever-changing mandates, mask mandates, vaccination mandates, and that has actually multiplied the stress within our community. I don't think that's a negative. What do you think, Robert? Just to address that, this is a bigger stressor than the two years that we have suffered economically, politically, physically. I mean, I think that right there would be a natural place to put something. And then I think everybody would be happy with that.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sanchez has her hand raised.
Counselor Sanchez.
So I just want to include the fact that Baker City has even went a step further, saying that they were going to file a lawsuit, and they were requesting other municipalities or cities to join with them. And so I think if we're going to get fined $500, I mean, how much is it going to cost when people are forced to choose to help with the emergency services? How much is that going to cost versus the $500 fine? I just, I think that we're, a line has been drawn in the sand. We are also going to have to draw a line in the sand. And while we might not be enforcing or saying that we're going to not push back so hard, we have to stop being un-American, and let people make the decisions for themselves, and support support their choices. I just, I just get really frustrated with the, the tiptoeing around. I understand liability and legalities, but I mean, if we're gonna use Baker City as an example, they literally said they were not gonna enforce this. They weren't gonna force vaccine passports, vaccine mandates, and they were gonna go further to take her to court, so.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Did I understand, Robert? That it's $500 a day per person per day?
Correct. That's, that's what it says in the, OAR, right. That's what it says in the OAR under the, under the thing. So, it could add up, but I understand what people are saying. I'm just saying, like the city manager said, we just have to be real careful on, on what we say and how we say it and, and get out there, get it out there. We're basically tonight taking down information of where ideas and what people are thinking about.
It's my understanding that the $500 a day is a minimum. And when you read their Oregon Education Association, when they came out, yeah, when it came out, they said it's not just masks. They can wear those plastic visors and different things. It's much more inclusive than what people realize if they would read it, that people do have some choices. But I think in this, we need to protect the city. We have an obligation to do that. So, we need to keep it within the scope of our power and our obligations. And so, adding a simple whereas that addresses the compounded stress that these things have made, I don't really care what Baker City has done. They're on the other end of the state and they have nothing to do with us, so.
Personally, I would like to join their lawsuit. So, I think what's going on is unconstitutional, un-American, and it's infringing on people's personal religious rights and freedom of conscience as is allowed by the Constitution of the United States of America. And so, all of us were sworn in to protect and uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, and what is going on right now is unconstitutional. And I do not want anybody that provides volunteer services or emergency services or works within the city to be afraid that they are gonna lose their livelihood and our city is gonna go down the tubes because they feel like they have to get a vaccine that violates their conscience or their religious freedom. So, it, it does matter what Baker City is doing. It does matter what Sweet Home does. It does matter that everybody stands up to what's going on instead of just cowers, bows down and gets worried about a $500 fine. It's gonna hurt our town and it is hurting our town. We've seen the numbers increase an outrageous amount and it's just gonna get worse.
Therefore, we, I'm just throwing, you, you the attorney, not me. Therefore, we, uh, I'm trying to see if it was worded in there. I don't see it in there, but therefore, we are not in support of mask mandates or, or vaccination, forced vaccinations, however, we cannot, you know, OSHA's and the law, legal, we have no authority over the legal of the county. Go ahead.
Been making it a negative. Could we say that the city of Sweet Home supports individual choice rather than-
No, you say, you guys, you guys are wordsmith.
I mean, I, I, I always worry about negatives. So, I just think, put it as policy as possible. So, Robert, what do you think of that?
I, I, I understand. I've written it down and we'll stick it in a document.
Okay.
Yeah, with everybody's thoughts in there and, and come close to trying to satisfy everybody's thoughts that, then, then you can look at it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could real quick, just, I did a quick Google search. The, there's a, the Baker City Church sued Governor Brown in early May. Supreme Court's June 12 ruling was in the governor's favor. So, that suit went away. However, it does appear that just five days ago, the Baker City City Council is considering suing the governor. And they, they did request at their last meeting on August 24th to have their city manager obtain legal counsel for a potential lawsuit the city could file or join challenging Governor Brown's recent mandates regarding vaccinations for healthcare workers and face masks for students and staff.
So, the word supports, could we change it to recognizes? Yeah. I think that would be.
I, I agree with Counselor Sanchez in, in the, the small number of that. I wish all the cities would get together and file a lawsuit. I do think that they're violating my, my rights. Now, I chose to do what I did or what I didn't do, and that's a, that's a thing I should be able to do. You know? I'll tell you, my, my daughter didn't have my, my grandson's thing in California and they couldn't go to school. Couldn't go to school. So, what are you gonna do? I don't know what's gonna happen. I, I would not be surprised if she shuts the whole dang same thing again, the whole thing, not just part of it, all of it. That, that's just the feeling I have, so, anyway.
Well, we recognize that for community health, the goal is to get our children back into school and try to live as normally as possible through this pandemic. And I think we're just gonna have to toughen up and deal with what needs to be done to make that environment as safe as possible for them. We make choices about safety with sports every day. We make choices about safety with sped every day. And there's a lot of mandates that go on with schools. I, and I assume that with firefighting and the police, the same thing. It is just books and books of mandates and regulations. And I think we just need to be really careful and stick with the goals of what we're after. We're after our community being able to manage this successfully. And the biggest part of that is getting our children back into school safely, so.
With all due respect, Counselor Gorley, if I name Mr. Mayor, I don't really know how our children are gonna be able to go back to school safely when up to half of the teachers are not going to get the required vaccination and then there's nobody to teach them. So, we have to do what we can, like you said, to get our kids back in school. And requiring people to get vaccinations is not the way to go about it. It's actually making it worse. So, we have to make a bold statement, in my opinion. I know that we don't have any authority or jurisdiction over the school board, but we have to empower the people of our community to make personal choices for themselves, not out of fear, but out of what they believe with their conscience. And then we have to figure out how to deal with that after the fact, cause we're gonna be in a bad way with these forced vaccinations.
With the proclamation as it sits. I think we've addressed the issues. I think we have been very inclusive and I'm surprised that we have gotten this far this fast.
I, but I still like to put in like, we, further the city has recognized individual choice related to masks and vaccines.
As long as it doesn't leave us open for litigation as a city individually.
Does if you put in there-
I understand what you're saying.
Where our liability, we could put it in there and with, with wording our liability position. Yeah.
Ray's gonna work on that with Robert.
Yes, I am. I'm gonna be honest with you though. Oftentimes, as you give me direction, I take a lot of poetic license to finagle language to fit what I think you intend. I'm not inclined to do that on this one for the reasons that we've just discussed. So, I would, I'm gonna ask the council, if, if this is what, this language works, then that's what you want. If it's not exactly this language, then I'm gonna ask for some specific direction in this.
Well, Robert, what would you add on this for the liability side of it?
Well, let me, I guess this way. I understand what Ray's saying, but I, we've heard stuff here. My position would be is, is we try to write it up as close as we can to what you guys have said and then bring it back to you and see if it passes. And if I think it's gone over, whatever, I'll tell you or, or whatever.
I'll accept it as we've added to it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a little bit more. I don't think it changes that at all. But I do like this line from one of the other proclamations that says, "We believe our citizens are fully capable of making their private, individual healthcare and lifestyle decisions themselves." I think we've already illustrated that in other laws that we've passed, so I just like that addition.
That would be paragraph four from the Baker City, correct? Uh, yeah. Whereas, "We do believe our citizens..." Yeah, let's go back down to that line and just add it. "We believe that citizens are..." "We believe our citizens are fully capable of making their private, individual healthcare and lifestyle decisions themselves." My colon and.
I can live with that.
So can I.
Counselor Sanchez, Counselor Richards, you wanna add to that or do you agree with that or?
I, I like adding what Counselor Coleman just suggested. I also like Robert retooling what the draft was and bringing something to us at the next resolution to incorporate all of what we have discussed. I, I would like to see what he comes up with after that.
Yes, I agree. I'm, I'm fine with that. I'd just like to see it at the end, but I'm, I'm good to go so far.
Counselors that are on the phone, just so I could clarify, we have the proclamation up on the screen right now and we've added the, the language you have discussed. So, maybe what we'll do is take this, we will email it to you each individually and so you'll be ready for it at our next meeting.
Thank you.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't exactly fit what you're, what you'd like to say, then you can send us some changes and Robert and I will work on trying to incorporate them.
Well, I'm kinda concerned. I'm wondering, are we voting and looking at this as a council? Are we gonna go back and wordsmith it individually?
I, I'm gonna give you guys all an opportunity to give us feedback and at the next meeting we'll, we'll share that feedback. And if something's different than what you have on the screen in front of you, then you can further discuss that and instruct us to make those changes.
Mr. Mayor, I think, there's a gentleman in the, there that wanted to speak, I think.
It's a work session, yeah.
Good. Never mind. My, my fault.
Well, I could definitely, I can give permission since we're not having 20 million people for tonight. So, gentlemen, would you like to feed, feed back to us briefly as to your thoughts?
Trap door. Robert? Beans, we're having these two gentlemen talk. Are we in some violation of having everyone that wanted to come talk? Without making that announcement so that they can play their piece?
We didn't, I don't know if we said that nobody could talk. I don't know if we said that.
Well, it's, it's open, so.
It's open, so.
I didn't want us to get in trouble.
Right. I don't think we said anywhere in it that people couldn't talk.
I think this all falls under my prerogative too. I mean, if I had a house full of people here, I was gonna say, "Time out, we're not here till midnight." So, these two gentlemen are not a full house, so I think I respectfully, I know these guys are two doctors and I respect for their, their opinions. So, gentlemen, your name and address and go ahead and give us your thoughts.
Testing.
Yep. You're good. Thank you for having us. My name is Sam Milstein. I'm a osteopathic physician.
Tim Hindmarsh, been in the community for almost 30 years, primary care doc.
Welcome.
So, I, I have one suggestion for your work session with regards to the statement for us, so we all get trained in the medical ethics and the, the four tenets of medical ethics being non-nominal feasance, beneficence, justice and autonomy. And part of our job as physicians is navigating those very murky waters. And I think that kinda covers all the issues that are at play, both non-nominal feasance, not doing harm, beneficence, but justice, right? Respecting other people. And then additionally with respect to Governor Brown's proclamation, 21-20, paragraph or article, because doctor, not attorney, but there are specific exceptions to that.
Is it working now? Okay. With the emergency order 21 dash, got it? Yeah, ooh, now.
Fancy. With Governor Brown's emergency order 21 dash 29, I don't know if it's article or paragraph number five, there are specific except, uh, uh, exceptions to her emergency proclamation with respect to the mandate of immunizations. And those might mitigate some people's fears. There are religious exceptions, medical exceptions, et cetera. And so, I would encourage folks, instead of a reactionary response, to read the text and it's rather reassuring because I had, as a upcoming employer in the community here in, what, a week and a half? I had my own freak out moment and so I had to read the text of the, of the article and it's, it's not as bad as, as folks think.
Yeah, you know, I just, I, I look at this as a doctor, cause I have no other way to look at it and, you know, first do no harm. So, really, it is a pandemic, so there's gonna be harm. It's unavoidable. The issue is how to do the least amount of harm possible. And, you know, as an outsider kind of looking in, what do I want from you all? Well, I would like less potholes. I would like, uh, uh, higher speed limits. But actually, what I really want is I want someone to come and put my house out if it's on fire and drag my slightly chubbier than it used to be rear out of my house with a heart attack. And so, you know, I get the litigation side, but if you lose half your fire department and half your police because of something like this, I guarantee you I'd sue you if, if myself or somebody in my, in my house was, my home was harmed because of that. I mean, that's your primary responsibility as far as I'm concerned. It's the city of Sweet Home, which is, you know, police, fire, roads, safe water, et cetera. So, if, if you all believe that it's less safe for- So if, if you all believe that it's less safe for the city to lose employees than to do these mitigation efforts, which are dubious at best based on any kind of reading that I've done, and unfortunately, I've read about 400 hours on this stuff. I'm pretty tired of it. I mean, and that's the decision you have to make. So I 100% support you in that. Having said that, I can't read that because I'm old. Having said that, I, I agree with, I agree with Sam. There is other ways around this. My understanding of the religious exemption is it's pretty easy to do that. And there's not a lot of people that don't fall into one of those categories. Yeah, relative risk ratio, exactly.
What I was trying to hint at him without interrupting really was, we have something in, in statistics called the relative risk ratio. The relative risk ratio of dying from COVID-related causes versus automobile accidents along our very busy Highway 20 corridor. One, I don't know off the top of my head, but I would assume that they're much higher dying from a motor vehicle accident than dying of COVID.
The, the easy one is there's twice as many children killed a year in backyard pools as there were killed in COVID in 18 months.
Thank you, gentlemen. Regent, your feedback.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So, Counselor, any feedback you want to add or anything else thing you want to bring up? And before we turn it over to the city to put something in front of us.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think that the comment about, especially troubling for you and I, not being able to have a fight a fire, not having a crew to take a paramedic to a cardiac arrest, not being able to go on wildland fires. The, the, the consequences are, you can't even put a number on that. You just can't. If, if my grandkids were here or your grandkids or whoever, and they didn't have somebody to come and help them, I mean, that is just over the top. It's just over the top. I don't know what the heck she's thinking. And she obviously must not have, have thought this through for the, for the rural people that have so little money to deal with and never get help from that part, some of it, not all of it. But some of the, it's hard to get help from them. They mandate stuff that they don't help take care of. It's really frustrating. You know, I'm in the last part of my time in the, in the fire district and, and, but I, I feel their pain. I really do. And, and it's horrible for me to think that. It just is. So, anyway, that's, that's my point. And, and I'm, I'm okay with what we've changed here. If, if that doesn't get the mayor thrown in jail, I'm fine with that. So we're, we're good. I mean, I think this works, and if it doesn't, then Robert will let us know at CIS or whatever it is, that they want to tell us that, you know, you're off the road here, then we, we, we'll need to deal with that, too. So, anyway, let's move along and, and see what we come up with.
I agree with that. Anything else? Counselor Sanchez, Counselor Richards, any more feedback?
Mr. Mayor, if I just might say this one last thing. I appreciate the doctors coming and giving public testimony on this. I, I did hear that the religious exemption just came through within the last couple of days. I have heard of instances where employees have given a religious exemption, and there was no capability for them to work outside of the home, and they were put on a leave of absence without pay. And they also won't be able to receive unemployment. So I just, I'm a little bit hesitant to say just rely on the religious exemption because some employers from people that even live within our town that work outside of the city are losing their jobs even with the religious exemption. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
I just also want to say thank you both for speaking tonight and thank you for bringing up the religious exemption thing. I think that's important to go through. Thank you.
Okay, anything else further? If nothing further, we will go ahead and adjourn this session at 7:27.